I want to start this evening's joint elected officials meeting by calling the Eugene City Council to order. Mayor Pierce, he's gone this evening as she is in Vancouver for a rail summit. And so as council president, I get to sit in her stead here for a little while. And I thought I'd say before turning it over to the president of the E-Web board that we have a couple of people with us, I'd just like to say real quickly that we have Rick Ingham, who is the city manager for Veneta in the back of the room as well during part of our conversation. That would be useful to know. And I'd like to welcome Roger Gray, the new general manager for E-Web, who's here with us tonight as well. And I want to remind everybody around the table to share microphones with everybody that's here. And turn this over to the E-Web board members to introduce themselves and then as I understand it, we'll have some presentation from staff.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Eugene Water and Electric Board. And then I'd like to ask each individual commissioner to introduce themselves and their respective boards, starting with Commissioner Cunningham, please.
Richard Cunningham, wards six and seven.
Bob Cassidy, wards two and three.
Joanne Ernst, wards one and eight.
Ron Farmer, wards four and five.
And John Brown, Commissioner-at-Large. Then the next thing we'd like to do is turn the mic over to Ron Farmer to give us an overview and a perspective of, a little historical perspective of what we're doing and what we're talking about.
Well, I hate the idea of me giving the historical perspective because it probably means I'm getting really old, but I'll take on the duty anyway. First of all, let me express my appreciation for the city council getting together with us tonight. I think that any time that we have the chance to understand each other's work, it's just a benefit for the citizens of Eugene all the way around. The water of the Mackenzie River may be the most valuable asset owned by the citizens of Eugene. It uniquely links our electric and water utilities via our E-Web dams. It creates a solid base of low-cost renewable green energy to power our homes and businesses. The water itself, amongst the best in the world, sustains this community. Its high quality is a very real major component of the quality of life that we enjoy here. And its abundance gives us a real measurable competitive cost advantage. The value of this asset, I think, is often taken for granted by many in this community, but not by the E-Web board. We know we hold the right to these water rights as a sacred trust. Now, from a historical standpoint, I think that we've all truly understood that if you have water rights, you need to use them. But this really came to the forefront when the Oregon Legislature, over the last few years, passed a body of law that in layman's terms basically says, "Use it or lose it." That's when we knew that we really needed to get serious about protecting these rights. Preserving our last and largest water right keeps that asset in the hands of Eugene citizens. Lose it, and shame on us. If you don't remember anything else that we say tonight, remember, working towards the retention of this most valuable asset is the key motivating reason for pursuing a water contract with the city of Veneta. Now with all of us just a little more than tired of all this rain that we've been having, it may be hard for a lot of us to understand just how valuable these water rights are and will be in the future. For all of its shortcomings, the Region 2050 process is what really drove that home for It qualified and identified the real value of these water rights. And more importantly, it identified that most of the communities in our immediate vicinity are for all practical purposes facing future water shortages. The only entity with water access beyond their capacity need is Eugene and E-Web. In the future, that capacity is going to be priceless. If some of that capacity can be harnessed now for the benefit of the citizens of Eugene and for our Veneta neighbors, then that will be an ethical win for all of us. Now, selling surplus water on a wholesale basis is not unusual or new in E-Web's history. We've been doing it on an ongoing basis for nearly 70 years. Currently, we sell surplus wholesale water to water districts which serve customers outside the city of Eugene. Those include, to the south, the Willamette Water Company, who we've been selling wholesale water to for 38 years; to the northeast, the Santa Clara Water District, who we've been selling wholesale water to for 54 years; to the east, Glenwood, who has been buying our water for 67 years; and to the north, the River Road Water District, who we've been selling water to for 69 years. We have also sold water to former water districts or other utilities, but for other reasons have decided to terminate those contracts. Those include water districts in Bethel, Oakway, the Rainbow Water District, Springfield Utility Board, and Hillcrest. I would also note that the concept of regional water supply is well documented as a best practice in Portland, Hillsborough, Salem, and Medford. Our planning relative to a regional water provision strategy to protect our water rights has been going on for a long time. I've been involved in it for the decade that I've been on the E-Web board. In 2004, we included it, included this effort as part of our Water Master Plan. And in August 2005, we first introduced the concept on a formalized basis to the mayor and key city staff. It has been part of all of our inter-agency and regional planning discussions. E-Web has shared with city staff and the city manager its plans to pursue selling surplus water to other communities on numerous occasions. Now, it is true that recently, the opportunity to exercise this strategy has accelerated. As we all know, planning is often the slave of funding. You can plan all you want, but if you don't have the dollars to do it, it really doesn't make any difference. In very late 2009, the USDA, under its Rural Development Department, contacted Veneta, indicating that significant funding was available and that they were very interested in Veneta's desire to purchase water from E-Web. They encouraged Veneta to submit an application by February 1st, 2010, to help fund the project. Prior to this USDA funding opportunity, supplying regional water to Veneta was a hypothetical proposition at best. However, with this funding potential and the completion of Veneta's master plan, the theoretical has quickly moved to a possible reality timeline. As a result, E-Web has moved to expedite the opportunity, knowing and understanding full well our stewardship responsibility to protect and perfect our valuable water rights. We're excited about the opportunity to do so and hope that the excitement and support extends to our partnership with the city council. Thank you.
Brad Taylor, E-Web staff, will now give a presentation. Brad?
Thanks, John. That was actually a real good background here, so some of the material I'll move through more quickly than others. But I want to just say that I appreciate the opportunity and invitation to discuss with you tonight Eugene's most valuable asset. The story starts and ends like this. It is in our mutual best interests to put permitted water to beneficial use in order to help assure water availability for the citizens of Eugene for future years. And with that, we can really state the conclusions of tonight's presentation, which is, it's in our best interest because it helps secure our water right for future generations. We have surplus water available and capacity available to serve. And it spreads the high fixed costs over a wider base, lowering E-Web's costs and minimizing the magnitude of future rate increases. Now, while all these are sort of the traditional conclusions, I also want to share with you -- if I can work the mouse here, excuse me. It's acting really slow for some reason there. At the same time, we are mindful of our leadership role we play in maintaining and being stewards of the resource. If you're not familiar with terms like permitted water, beneficial use, water availability, it is my hope that I'm able to articulate that understanding to you tonight. Several years back, communities within Lain County and Southern Lamb Basin participated in a regional process, as Commissioner Farmer shared with us. The process was ultimately unsuccessful, but it clearly identified the challenges that E-Web faces and that our surrounding communities faced. Decades previously, back in 1970, and even prior to the Eugene-Springfield Metro Plan, similar discussions around regional long-term planning were had. That work was documented in a study called "The Water Master Plan for the Eugene-Springfield E-Web was an active participant then, and we continue to be an active participant today. In addition, during this same time, E-Web signed a cooperative agreement for water system interties between three metropolitan water providers: Springfield Utility Board, Rainbow Water District, and E-Web. The motivation for signing this cooperative agreement was around being prepared to respond to emergencies. And it just so happened, as we were preparing this agreement, that Katrina hit. And we were all really reminded of the fact that community is a bigger concept other than just our city limits, for example. Next slide, please. And as this slide shows, we really do have vulnerabilities as it relates to the provision of water to our citizens. Next slide. So now, let's move back to E-Web's existing water rights. We have three water rights on the Mackenzie River. In 1927, our board directed E-Web staff to submit an application for 17.5 million gallons. That permit was renewed or extended in 1946 with a new application for 58 million gallons per day. And these two first, these first two water rights have been certificated, meaning that they've been put to beneficial use. To put water to beneficial use is done by actually delivering the water. So for us, in order to show that we've used it, we have to pump, treat, and deliver it into our distribution system. And those two water rights, we have shown that we've been able to do that. The third water right, which was obtained in 1961, was actually obtained during that time that I made reference to earlier, when we were engaged in regional planning. And the board directed staff to apply for a water right large enough to be a participant in that regional discussion. And we have board meeting minutes notes that document that intent. This third large, this third water right is the largest of the water rights, and it actually has remained 97% undeveloped since the time it was applied for in 1961. The total of the three water rights is close to 200 million gallons per day. I'll have you move to the next slide. If the button is working now, seems to timeout.
Okay, so it's not him.
Or it's both of you.
Yeah. I think it's just timing out.
There you go.
So that's the context of our E-Web water rights. What I also wanted to show to the council and the board is that the Mackenzie has an in-stream water right associated with it. This flow is for both natural flow and flow that's released from storage, for a total of 1,725 CFS. And I've done the math there on the screen for you to convert that to MGD, 1,115 million gallons per day. And that's just to put it in proportion to the total amount of water rights that E-Web holds on the river. And the point here being that these water rights are preserved in the river for the very purpose of protecting aquatic life and minimizing pollution. And they're also the point in which junior users are regulated off the river. And this is important because E-Web has very senior water rights on the river, but there's other users that don't. And at times when there is a need from the river, the folks with the oldest priority date will be the first ones in line for the water, at the same time as meeting the requirements for in-stream purposes. Next slide. So this slide will provide you some context here. Let me just walk you through it. So on the x-axis, we have year out to 2050. On the y-axis, we have million gallons per day of water. And the red line up on the top represents the total water rights that E-Web holds, 194 million gallons per day. The blue dots down in the lower left-hand corner represent the historical water use of the city of Eugene and its wholesale customers from 1980 up through 2009. The first horizontal line up from the bottom is a representation of the certificated water rights that E-Web holds. Those are the two that I shared with you earlier. And the green dotted line, horizontal line, represents the amount of water that we need in order to show partial certification. And I'm going to explain that a little bit more, but let me finish with the graph. The line extending from 2009 out to 2050 is a projection of the city of Eugene's need for water from now out to 2050. And just to reiterate, this is just for the city of Eugene. So as this graph shows, when you go out to 2050, we are still not at a place under today's understanding of where we think the future may lie, to be able to apply for partial certification. Now, partial certification actually was explained to you to some degree from Brenda during, when you guys were discussing this issue a couple of weeks ago. But it's something that's only given to a municipal entity. There are no other water users that get this ability in order to do this. And what it gives us the ability to do is to show that we've put to use 25% of the water and be able to actually get a certificate issued for that amount of water, which then gives it increased security. It can't easily be taken away at that point. And then it also preserves our ability to continue working on certification out to full certification of the water right. So partial certification represents the first step in securing our water right for the future. So one additional aspect of securing our water right is actually to get an approved permit extension. We're currently in the process of going through a permit extension with Oregon Water Resources Department. This extension process involves a persistence review, and that actually can mean several things. You have to have a lot of persistence in order to keep working on this issue because it's a long issue. And then the more salient point there is that the persistence review was established in 2005 legislation, which Ron made hint to, that this is when the rules sort of changed. And this persistence review is a one-time review that's done to determine if the withdrawal of the full water right amount would have impacts on listed fish species. In addition to the, for the permit extension application, you're required to show a need for the water. You actually have to have a plan in place to show how you're going to put that water to use. And you have to have an approved water management and conservation plan, which details and puts the limitations on how you can beneficially show how you're going to use the water efficiently. And this is where we have requirements for conservation and other water use best management practices that are involved in showing that you're wisely using the water. Next slide. So if we don't secure the water right, what happens to it? Well, the water would go back to the state, and it would be available for others to request. I would like to also point out that today, water is still available from the Mackenzie for further appropriation. And just within the last month, there have been multiple permits applied for at the department for additional appropriation on the Mackenzie River. These appropriations are not necessarily municipal appropriations. They can be all sorts of appropriations, not necessarily for the public good. And what's important here is that if we give up our right to access the river, we don't get it back. There's a process to get it back, but it's similar to the experience that you have when you go down to DMV and you pull a new number from the little ticker there, and you end up being at the end of the line all over again and again. That goes, the important point to make there is this priority date has extreme value. Losing the 1961 priority date would have a huge impact on our ability to use the water into the future. Next slide, please. So showing the need for water, obviously, one way is to look at our future growth within the city of Eugene, and that's part of it. One, a couple of points to make there is just within the last few years, we've seen Hynek's leave, which was about 1.8 to 2 million gallons per day of water. The Glenwood Water District actually went to be, went to the city of Springfield and is now served by the Springfield Utility Board. So we've lost the service capability for that water district. And so we've actually seen the need for water being reduced, not necessarily increased. And I'm not necessarily saying that's a bad thing. That's just a reality that I want to share with you for context. We show need for water through our existing wholesale customers, Santa Clara River Road, Willamette Water Company. And as we're here to talk about tonight, we show it through our involvement in our planning activities with neighboring cities like Veneta. So this graph is based on historical data, and it shows you the top line is representing our total amount of production and delivery to E-Web retail customers. The lower line represents today's view or today's reality around our wholesale water deliveries to the districts that I listed in the previous slide. These wholesale contracts today represent about 7% to 8% of the total production within our system. And adding a Veneta into this discussion would add about 0.9 to 1% to that number to give you just a relative understanding of what it would mean. So we've made this point a couple of times, but to reiterate, there have been numerous levels of interest from multiple communities as it relates to E-Web as a potential water source in the future. We've had conversations coming out of Region 2050 with Cresswell, Coburg, Junction City, and Veneta. All of these satellite communities have identified E-Web as a potential water source within their water master plans, which are documents that are adopted and approved by state agencies. They've been identified in water management and conservation plans that are mandated by state agencies. These water management and conservation plans actually require communities to evaluate the opportunity to use a regional water source if those communities are having a need to apply for a new water right in the future. And so the state is essentially requiring these communities to not only just look for new water, but to collaborate and work with neighboring utilities. And I think that it's that direction that they've been given by the state is a big driver for these communities actually talking to E-Web about how that relates to where our So as it relates to Veneta, in 2008, E-Web and Veneta completed a study looking at supplying drinking water from Eugene Water and Electric Board out to Veneta. That work was used by Veneta in their preparation of their water system master plan, which was issued in May of 2009. And within that document, there was a discussion of the complexities that Veneta has in terms of finding long-term water supply sources. E-Web is not the only option for Veneta. It's one of the options for Veneta. Veneta has the capability to look for additional groundwater supplies. They have the capability to participate with a number of water providers within the Willamette Basin on accessing municipal storage water from Willamette Basin projects. And Veneta's actually been a partner with E-Web on looking at that issue. And E-Web is a third potential for them in meeting their future challenges. Now, the opportunity for grant funds to become available as it relates to this discussion and Veneta deciding on which way they want to approach this future really made them start to have some hard conversations about, does it make sense to have, to spend money in the short term on looking for groundwater with the risk of some of the production issues that they've had with existing wells and some of the quality issues, water quality issues they've had with water coming from those wells? Does it make sense for Veneta to keep going down that road? Or with the opportunity for grant funds, does it make sense to bring this regional supply concept out for discussion and consideration by the community of Veneta? So that's the route that Veneta chose to go down. They've prepared an environmental report, a biological assessment. Both of these documents produce findings of no significant impact on the pipeline route from, from Veneta to the city of Eugene. There was public comment, period, that ended May 7th as it relates to There was public comment, period, that ended May 7th, as it relates to people commenting on these reports and those findings. No comments were received by Vinita. And I think that it's also important to note that this was sort of the next step for us in terms of why it was important for E-Web to enter into this contract. Because, as the city knows, when you're, when you're trying to find money or going after money, you have to put together a fairly sophisticated submittal in order to show the need for that. As part of that submittal, these funding agencies wanted to know that Vinita could get the water from E-Web, as was being represented in these reports. That was the motivation for E-Web to start contract negotiations with Vinita, to have a contract in place that provided the means and the mechanism to deliver the water as described in the project discussions. That was further, or that was followed on by filing, filing the contract in a petition for validation in order to ensure that prior to expenditure of any public funds, that that contract could be approved and the provision of water from E-Web to Vinita would be allowed. This process also provides an opportunity for other third-party interests to come forward as it relates to petitioning the procedure. And this further insulates both E-Web and Vinita as it relates to a future expenditure on, on this project. And I also want to point out that the community of Vinita hasn't made the decision to buy water from Vinita. They've made the decision to consider it and to explore how to, how to make that happen. In order for Vinita to make a decision, they have to understand, well, what does this mean for, for us? How much is it going to cost? What kind of funding packages are available? And we have ideas about what all this looks like, but you don't get to make that decision until you've gone through the funding process and you understand the details of the packages that you could be offered relative to, you know, building these projects. Next slide. Actually, we might need to move through a couple of them here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deborah to discuss with you just the highlights of, of the wholesale contract.
This is the exciting part, the contract. So it's a, the contract was signed in April of 2010. It is a 40-year contract. The term is consistent with the financing that the city of Vinita is pursuing, with subsequent 10-year renewal options. Vinita is required for the contract to maintain their own emergency source of water, which they expect to do through the well system that they currently use. And just as E-Web is required, as Brad mentioned, to file our own water management and conservation plan with the state, in order to obtain or perfect rights, the city of Vinita will be required to either maintain their existing water management and conservation plan or formally adopt E-Web's. The initial estimate is for 150 million gallons per year, with a minimum purchase quantity by month of 8 million gallons, 8 million gallons per month, which is about 263,000 gallons per day, and a maximum purchase quantity of 4 million gallons a day. So a couple of thoughts, because as I was looking at those numbers, I wanted to try and tie them back to the numbers that you received in your AIS that talked about the current consumption. So as best I understand it then, the initial estimate of 150 million gallons per year compares, city of Vinita in your document, it talks about an average daily use of 1.1 million gallons a day. Correct?
0.9.
It's .9, but then a maximum of, of the, maximum of 1.1. The water we're talking about at 150 million gallons per year is .41. So it's important to note, and that was interesting to me, that we're not talking about going in and providing all of Vinita's water. Vinita is continuing to provide water at the initial onset of the contract. And then when you take that, it is interesting, the contract does allow for growth over time. But, growth in use, but again, the maximum right now is peak. Do you remember Brad in the AIS?
1.1.
1.1, again. So versus what the maximum purchase quantity there of 4 million gallons a day, which is significantly more than what the current maximum might be. So, all in all, as Brad mentioned, less than 1% of E-Web's current water sales to retail customers. So a very small percentage. It's a point-of-sale contract at the Eugene City UGB limits. And I'll, the next slide is a map and you'll see where that point of sale is. Vinita meets us at that point of sale, and that's a really important distinction. Another is that this is a surplus water agreement. It's interruptible during times of shortage or emergency. It doesn't put Eugene citizens or Eugene water users, current customers, it doesn't put us at risk. E-Web retail customers have the first priority. And again, what's interesting is there is a slight distinction in this contract between the Santa Clara and River Road contracts, which are for, I think Brad, you told me it was called surplus firm.
Firm surplus.
Or firm surplus. So it is a, it is a slightly different priority and it more clearly delineates the, the surplus nature of this water and also the nature of the community, the, where these customers are relative to Santa Clara River Road. The upper left-hand corner is a map of Vinita. And of course, the bottom right-hand corner is Eugene. And the red star right there at the boundary is where the transfer would take place. And then you see the pipeline moving out there west. So, as Brad said, the story ends just as the story began. We think it's in our mutual best interest to do all we can to protect our currently uncertified water right. It helps, this contract will help secure that water right. We have surplus water and capacity available. And the contract, although small, is a step towards spreading high fixed costs over a wider base, lowering costs and minimizing the magnitude of future rate increases. I think that's really important because again, even though it's a very small contract, the community right now, through the loss of Hynek's and Glendale customers, et cetera, we're actually seeing some contraction. And I think it's important for our existing customers that we do our best to mitigate for future rate actions. I think that's the end of our staff presentation.
Deborah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. John, do you have anything to add? Wonderful. We appreciate very much the chance for us to learn a little bit more about this. I know that when we had the initial presentation, there were counselors with some questions. And so it looks like we're forming the queue already here and we'll go through those. Betty, it looks like you're first.
Thank you. Well, first, who gets the rights if we lose them? You say we're in danger of losing the rights. Does that mean someone else will get them?
Counselor Taylor? The water rights would be lost and the water would go back to the state for further, other opportunities for further appropriation by other water users.
So you mean it might go to other communities or something of that sort?
Communities. It could go to water companies. It could go to other users, ag users, any, any other entity that would come along that has a need to apply for a water right. And as I mentioned, water is currently available on the McKenzie today. So it's not like if those waters, waters went back, that they would immediately then just be protected for in-stream flows. They would go back on the market essentially.
So if we're getting the rights and we're giving them to someone else, how does that benefit us?
I'll clarify that, that with, these water rights are not being given to the city of Vinita. This is a-
Giving them the water. You mean we could take it back anytime?
This is a surplus water agreement for a 40-year term with 10-year, 10-year renewals. And it, the transfer of ownership doesn't go to the city of Vinita. This is strictly a surplus water agreement.
So if we were short of water, we could say to them, you don't get any water?
Yes.
We can do that.
Yes, but with that, we have to recognize that the water rights that we have, that we currently hold, meet our needs out over 120 years into the future.
I remember, and I remember a few years ago, we were told we had to conserve water.
Well, and we still do, just because that's part of us showing beneficial use of the water. And beneficially using the water is our customers having a proper ethic around how they use the water as it relates to, you know, serving a municipal need. So, conserving water is an important aspect of that equation.
Yeah, but I think we were short of water at one, we were told that we were short of water a few years ago. Now you're saying we have excess water.
Yes. In fact, we've just completed a planned expansion at Hayden Bridge that increases the capacity to 80.5 MGD from the current rated capacity of 68. And I'll also point out, by just losing Hynek's and Glenwood Water District, that's way more water than what a Vinita is. And, you know, we've just lost that at the same time that we've had to make capital improvements that have actually increased the capacity of our system. And a lot of those, those capacity adding improvements that were made were actually made for aging infrastructure reasons and we just happened to net out of that the ability to have a more efficient operation at Hayden Bridge. So the intent was, was really aimed at just replacing aging infrastructure.
And it's not going to cost us anything, I think you said, to extend the pipes to Vinita?
E-Web is for, for none of the pipeline between the city limits and Vinita. Vinita, that's Vinita's responsibility. They bring the pipe to us.
And how is this going to minimize our increases, our rate increases? I think you said minimize?
The, the concept is, is that we have very high fixed costs as a water utility. For us to deliver 70 MGD doesn't cost any more than 72 MGD in reality. So by actually selling more water on a baseload basis, provides our ability to spread that out over more customers and therefore mitigating the risk around future rate increases.
And what were the junior, junior users who were regulated off? What does that mean?
Junior users are those that have come after us in terms of priority date. So our last water right was 1961. There are a whole bunch of users that have come after 1961. When I say junior users are regulated off, it's all those users that come after what, after the point in time, you know, for example, the in-stream water right, for example. If the flows were not sufficient to meet that in-stream water right, junior users would be regulated off in order to ensure that the river had that flow in it.
Where did the salmon come in?
The salmon come in, in that the in-stream flow is the protected quantity of flow needed to protect aquatic species within the river. And that priority date and that water right is what the state uses to ensure the persistence and preservation of listed fish species.
And that comes ahead of junior users and ahead of Vinita?
It comes, it comes ahead of E-Web ultimately.
If I can make a clarify-
Another question. Oh, excuse me Brenda.
Just to clarify, junior user is not a set specific group of, of users across the state. It's anyone who got in line behind you. And so when the state determines that a cup of water is necessary, they will kick everyone off or shut off everyone's water until they have a cup of water. And everyone who came after that cup of water gets shut off. So junior is anyone who's in line behind you. Senior is anyone who's in line ahead of you. So who's junior and who's senior moves depending on whose water right you're talking about?
Then one more question. It's, I think we saw the contract was already signed. So what are we talking about? We're not helping to decide, are we?
Counselor Clark, Counselor Taylor? The question before you is whether or not, it's not just about the sale of water to Vinita. It's about certifying and perfecting this particular water right, which belongs to the city of Eugene. What this will help do is help certify the first quarter of that, so that E-Web can continue to work towards the perfection of the other 75% of it. You're not being asked right now to okay, whether or not the sale to Vinita is okay.
Thank you.
I want to say two things real quickly. One, obviously, we don't have the timers out here that we usually do. So if all of the counselors can limit their comments to three minutes or something close to it in their estimation, as Betty did, that'd be great. And secondarily here, I've got George Poling on the phone still, I think. So George, if you want to jump in, just yell out if you can still hear me there.
Yeah, I'm still here Mike. If you put me in the queue, I appreciate it.
Will do, sir. And now I have George Brown, Chris, Andrea Allen, and then George Poling. So George Brown.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to perfecting the third water right. The first two we know are perfected. Mike, I've got a series of questions. What, it says it has to be perfected within a reasonable timeframe? I assume the state water board told us what a reasonable timeframe is? What does that mean?
They, they told us within some sideboards. The 2005 legislative fix that they put in, put a sideboard on all future water rights of being able to develop them within a 20-year window. That's all future water rights, but that's how they begin to gauge what's reasonable and what's not. There are entities within Oregon that have received extensions up to 50 years. And so that's the guidance that I would provide to you as it relates to trying to put a sideboard on what's reasonable.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I understand that. The state has told us, basically, they want us to perfect this within 20 years? They want us to be using 25% of that third water right in 20 years? Is that correct?
They've told us that if we don't do that, that we're at higher risk of losing the water right and/or that we're at a higher risk of receiving additional conditions that would make the development of that water right difficult.
Okay. Then, I mean, basically, that's the rough idea. They want to see us use 25% of that third water right in 20 years. Given, given what you just said.
For many, many-
That's how I'm understanding what you just said.
And that's true. For many, many years, municipal, municipal entities had really open rights where those water rights were concerned. So part of the ambiguity here is, is that it is unclear. And it's unclear how specific situations will be interpreted. So folks like Brad spend a lot of time trying to figure out what the best path forward is given an uncertain set of rules.
Okay, thank you. Well, what, are we using any of that water right now? The city of Eugene? Is E-Web drawing any of that water in the third?
It's 97% undeveloped. So we're using a very-
3%?
Yes. We use 3%. It was actually 1998 when we did that. We've been using less than that since then.
Which would, well, 25% would be 29.5 million gallons a day. So that's basically what we have to be using.
Yeah. And if, if you remember back to that graph, I added that to the other two certificated quantity amounts to represent that 105 MGD out in year 2025. But if you did the math there, you would get to the same spot.
Okay.
And we've currently used about 78 or 80 MGD to date. So what we're talking about is using that 25 MGD amount in order to get to partial certification.
Okay. Well, I see that as doable. I mean, our, our population is supposed to increase 30,000 in 20 years and just Eugene's alone. I mean, it's a kind of conservative figure, which would be about 24 million gallons a day. I'm going to get some flinger out. Okay. And then what, just one more time, please. What is our total use now, including wholesale and retail? Just the average for E-Web?
The average use on a, on a annualized basis is around 27 to 30 million gallons per day. We've used up to 78 MGD on a given day, which is the requirement for showing beneficial use is to, you only have to use it on, on a day, or actually a period of a day in order to show that you need to have access to that quantity of water. Typically, this occurs during, you know, summer demands, when you have more, more uses.
So, so we're using around 30 million gallons a day?
27 to 30 million gallons per day is, yes.
That a year, that's wholesale and retail.
That's correct. Yes.
All right. That's for round one. Thank you.
I have Chris and then Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate, I just really appreciate the chance to get together with the EWEB board, because for me, there were three principal issues that I think are being covered. The first one having to do with the sale of this water to Veneta. And I think, I'm impressed with the number of safeguards you've put into your agreement with them. One, to protect citizens of Eugene from a financial burden-
Thank you.
-and also from a potential water loss burden. I mean, you've built provisions into the contract to ensure that neither one of those would occur, at least contractual. The second issue then becomes the one around perfecting the water right. And I recognize that this is EWEB's kind of elegant solution to killing two birds with one stone. We can provide this wholesale water contract, and we can use that to perfect the water right. There may be other ways to perfect the water right, even if it was on our radar screen, we might use the next few years to figure out another way to do it. But why do that if you've got this way to help you get, get there and accomplish that? So, they're linked. They're not inextricably linked, but they are linked. They're linked in a kind of elegant way, that you can use this to do that and protect Eugene at the same time. And there's obviously plenty of capacity for all. So, you know, even with the increase in population, we're in good shape. Which leads me really to my third reason for wanting to be here. And that was around the relationship between the Eugene City Council and the EWEB board around contractual agreements. We know what that is by a way of city charter with regard to retail sales of water, particularly extensions of retail sales of water. But I've not, since I'm, I guess, a relatively new, new person on the council, had the conversation around wholesale water. What is the relationship with the Eugene City Council and the EWEB board around the wholesaling of water? I mean, and as I said at the last meeting, I don't want to micromanage and intrude, but I just want to be clear on what that relationship is, so we can go forward together. Because wholesaling water, hey, that might be a real great way to, you know, do some creative kinds of things. And, and I want the EWEB board and the city council to work well together as we explore those new opportunities. So, that was my third reason for wanting to get together. I'm encouraged by the conversation so far, but I'm just working those three angles all at the same time. And so far, no big red flags. But as I said at the beginning, I'm glad we've had the chance to kind of sit down and start working through those topics.
Andrea?
Thank you. Well, Chris, as usual, you always kind of hit on what other people want to say.
Sorry about that.
So, that's okay. Because I just want to thank EWEB for responding to our request to me. I felt a little concerned that we hadn't had that conversation already when this was already in the paper and with all the stuff that's been in the newspaper. So, I'm glad that we're here and that we're having this conversation. And it's not only about relationships with EWEB, but it's about our relationship with our intergovernmental partners. And I think Veneta, you know, if they have a need and if they do decide that they want to go down this route, I think we should have a conversation with them also as to, you know, welcoming them or whatever we think is the appropriate role. Because, you know, McKenzie River is a very, it's a pearl. And I think we are good stewards, but I can't believe that they aren't going to be good stewards also. And so, I just, I'm just glad we're having this conversation.
I have Allen, and then George Poling.
I'd like to thank EWEB for coming here and talking with us today. I was one of those that expressed disappointment that you guys didn't come here earlier before we requested that you did. I didn't think that was in keeping with the spirit of working together as, as intergovernmental entities. But, so, thank you for coming here. I wish I'd done it before you filed the petition, but I have several questions. Brad, I guess the persistence thing also means that they usually take the youngest engineer they can find who's smart enough and stick them in charge of it because they're going to be doing it the rest of their lives. So, that's you.
He's older than he looks.
Yeah, I know. So, without, without Veneta, how do you plan to perfect the water right, the first quartile, anyway?
I have a couple of ways I'd respond to that, and maybe I'll just pick the best one. But, you know, there is no other way to put water to beneficial use other than to use it. And I think even before I was hired, I was very aware that it would be in EWEB's best interest to be a regional water provider. And it's not perhaps necessarily since I'm a newbie. I'm actually fairly well-schooled in water rights and have a lot of experience in this arena. And, and we have actually spent a fair amount of time trying to explore other opportunities as it relates to this. We've looked at in-stream leasing. We've looked at other ways of putting the water to some other public benefit in order to, you know, placeholder the water right. All these things, all these other options don't have pathways within existing water law in order for this to make, make it happen. So, there is not another way other than to show use of the water. And I think if we had the state Water Resources Department here, they would tell you the same thing, that for a municipal entity, that's beneficial use is putting the water to municipal use, period.
Let me rephrase the question. Without Veneta, can you perfect the water right?
It's a matter of time, Allen. And the, the regionalization is part of a planning process that can be laid out to the state that shows that we're diligent in our, in how we're approaching this issue. Coos Bay North Bend got sued over keeping their water rights undeveloped and unused. And, you know, it went all the way up into circuit court. That's what resulted in the 2005 legislative action. EWEB is here today because we understand that there are risks today, and there are increasing risks tomorrow relative to us losing this water right if we don't plan and execute our plan in a manner that shows that we can hold on to them. Does that answer the question, or are you still on the fence?
So, after talking to Brenda, there's no, there's no time limit to perfect it. It's a reasonable amount of time. And if you are, like, Coos Bay was stalled, and so, they were taken to court, and then-
Yeah. And the argument that was made there was is that they, they should only be given five years. That's why the legislation came back and said, listen, if we require municipal entities to only get, to only hold on to water rights that are only good for five years in the future, we're going to have a big problem.
Yeah, right.
And, and so, that then came back 20 years for all new municipal water rights, have 20 years to develop those water rights. They're also incorporating a Water Management and Conservation Plan, Division 86 Plan. Within that plan, you're given green light water and red light water. You're only given green light water for water that you can show in a plan that you're going to use in the next 20 years. Water outside of that period of time, meaning water outside of 20 years, is going to be put into a red light status. When water is put into that red light status, there are provisions within the law that put at question whether or not there will be additional conditions put on your ability to use that water in the future. That's why it is extremely important to have the plan in place that shows a need for water out to 20 years that, that actually truly makes an attempt at trying to show using as much of it as you can. Because otherwise, we're going to be put in a situation five, 10, 15, 20 years from now where, probably won't be me back here, but it might be someone else back here. Yeah, the next junior engineer. So, that's why it's important. And I would say that it isn't, it's not a free check. You just don't get, you may get an extension. We may be successful in getting an extension over 50 years. But the critical trigger happens between green light water and red light water as it relates to future conditions. And that happens at 20 years.
Yeah, within that, that quartile, right?
Yes.
Right. So, from all of that, I take it, you could probably perfect this water right without selling it to Veneta. So, it's really, in part, makes it easier to perfect the water right. But it doesn't make it, if you didn't do this, you could probably end up perfecting the water right. Interesting point.
May I just ask for clarification on what you mean by that we could, if we didn't have additional beneficial use demonstrated?
You'd probably figure out some other way to, to do it.
I don't-
Perfect the water right.
I don't have anything to offer. Are you aware of any other way to perfect the water right?
So, there seems to be two ways to perfect this water right. You can show that the consumption's going to be used within the City of Eugene and our water customers existing. And that gets you how far?
It would take over 120 years to show beneficial use of water, assuming current projections around coordinated population projections that have been adopted by Lake County.
For the first quartile of use?
Yes.
120 years?
120 years, over 120 years.
So, how are you going to perfect the water right, then?
Most likely, the reality of it is that we're not. The question becomes, how much of it can we protect in order to secure the future?
Well, it seems like this is a 40-year contract with renewals. While it has some pullback provisions, it's pretty much a permanent deal, I think. Although, it does have pullback provisions in case of drought, right?
Yes.
So, that's a good protection to have. So, the other thing I learned is that our water, water rights do not equal the capacity of our Hayden Bridge substation. When we, the Hayden Bridge substation actually limits how much clean water we have, potable water, and, and not how much water rights we have. We can always expand the Hayden Bridge subst- water station, treatment plant, to increase, to encompass more of our water rights. But it's really, that's the limiting factor, is our Hayden Bridge water station, right? So, the 11, so, so how much of the, of McKenzie River water rights are actually allocated right now?
Total allocation, I don't know. Brenda, any help there?
No.
Not totally, but that's a-
Everybody keeps saying it's not completely allocated, but no, you know.
Counselor Clark, Counselors, like, it, it depends on when it's measured. There will be times where there isn't enough water to even serve the, the permit holders that exist. And then there will be other times where there is water available. Right now, the state believes there is water available for permitting. And they will continue to offer permits as long as they believe water is available. But something could change that, something beyond our control, could change the amount of water that's available for permitting. It could, that, that change could be more, like, if we lost our water permit, that water would become available. Someone else could lose their water permit. Or something else could happen, and more water would be necessary for the protection of endangered species. We don't, we don't know. But right now, there is water available. At some time, there won't be, and the Water Resources Department will stop issuing permits.
On the lowest month right now, there's about an additional 200 CFS available on the river, on the lowest restricted month. And that's after the assumption by the department that we've taken the full 194 out for, for our purposes. And then, I'm in MGD when I did that conversion on you there. But just to represent that, that there's still a fair amount of water left.
Yeah, okay.
You want another round?
I'll hear another round.
Okay. George Poling.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Push down the thing on.
I find it rather ironic that we're talking about water when I'm sitting in 108-degree temperatures out here. So, first of all, I have made one question. Did I hear earlier that there has already been an environmental study on a proposed route for the pipeline?
That's correct.
And do you, do you have the results of that study that could be made available to the council, so we can take a look at it?
Those studies are available, and they can be found at www.veneta.org or whatever it is. Go to Veneta's webpage, and they're listed there on their webpage and available.
Okay. But I think, what I, what I thought I heard in technology is kind of odd. I can't get the webcast on my computer here, but I am on a cell phone, and it seems to be breaking up. Did you say that there weren't any real obstacles in reference to the proposed route? Is that, is that right?
It's my understanding that the findings of those reports were that there were no significant impacts as, as the conclusion of those reports. I would want to defer the clarification of that question to the City of Veneta, because it, that's, wasn't work done by EWEB, and I'm not necessarily the most knowledgeable person as it relates to that. But those are the findings that are posted in those reports.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that there's not mitigative actions that have to be done as part of, you know, putting the pipeline route in. But the finding was no significant impact.
All right, thank you. And then, I would, I would just like to agree with what Chris was saying in reference to the built-in safeguards of the contract. I think it was very well done. And John Brown's op-ed in This Morning's Paper, I believe it was, very clearly, pretty much explains the entire issue and puts to rest, I think, any questions that I had as far as, you know, the benefits and the, the, good that this, this will do. I want to thank staff for the answers that they provided to us from our previous meeting. And just, just the one thing about the City of Veneta, because of its recent growth and its future growth, you know, it needs the water. It will need water in the future. And if we don't act now to, and I think the terminology is perfect the water now, we're going to lose it in, you know, the rights and be put at the end of the line. And having been the baby of my family, being put at the end of the line quite often was not something. So, I would like us to go ahead and see us go ahead and move forward on this. I think this is kind of a win-win-win for everybody. So, I'm happy to see this proceeding as it is. Thank you.
Thanks, George. I have George Brown and Allen in the second round, but I want to ask if any of the EWEB commissioners or Jennifer want to jump in here at all as well. John Brown?
If I may, thank you for the compliment, George, our counselor Poling. As you know, I have a demonstrated passion for clean water, whether it be the Willamette or the McKenzie or whatever. And if, if I thought for one minute that by doing what EWEB is doing in any way jeopardized the integrity of the McKenzie or any watershed here, I would not be sitting here supporting this. But I also want to remind you that this is a use-it-or-lose-it concept. And the minute this water goes by our intake filter, it's mixed with millions of gallons of effluent from Warehouses Pulp Mill. And then it goes down, and a few miles later, it's mixed with all of Eugene and Springfield's Metro wastewater. And for us to not be able to satisfy a demand where a majority of our workers live and provide them with this quality commodity and allow somebody else downstream to take it and then put chemicals in it to remove all of those things that are mixed into it after it passes our intake, to me, isn't good stewardship of a natural resource. And, you know, to put a chemical in water to clean it is an oxymoron. So, I really think that this is a win-win. This is a way that our community, that'll be far beyond when we're not here, they'll say this was forward-thinking. And so, I really encourage you to give this serious consideration. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thank you. Well, I think it's kind of fitting that we're having this conversation right at the same time we're having our Envision Eugene conversation. Because basically, really fundamentally underneath everything that's been discussed tonight is the question of how we're going to grow. That's what this is all about. It's about growth of Veneta, growth of Eugene. It's about regional growth. I've got a question. If we can do this with Veneta, somebody mentions, I think you said earlier, that other cities, there's been this conversation with the Coburg Junction City, because apparently they're, they foresee the time when they won't have enough water. I assume they draw from, do they draw from the Willamette River?
Coburg Junction City uses groundwater.
Groundwater, huh, okay. All right. Well, anyway, so, so what, what we're talking is that if we do, do it this for Veneta, and I'm not saying at this point that we should, I haven't yet made my mind. I'm leaning towards it, but I have some reservations. Basically, I mean, there are a couple of things, I think, that were misstated in the AIS. One was that it's a regional solution to a regional problem. Seems to me like Veneta's problem is very localized. It's the substrate can't hold water. They can't produce enough water in their wells. It's a, not a, that's, most people's, that's not their problem. And the last bullet point was project will not increase growth. It can't, growth can't happen without that water. So, it's just the exact opposite. Without this water, Veneta won't be able to double its size like it's predicted in the next 20 years. So, and I'm just kind of playing around with some figures here. And all of our water rights, if they were, all three of them were perfected, we would get 193 million gallons a day, if we could draw that out of the McKenzie River. And extrapolating, we use 30 million a day now. If we used all of that, the City of Eugene, we'd be about a million. We'd have a population of about a million people. We'd have a population of about a million people. So, I mean, it's just something for us to think about. Do we really want to... Do we want Eugene to have a million people?
To clarify, too, you don't just get water rights for average day demand. You have to have water rights that are sufficient to meet demand on a day-by-day basis. And so when you're doing the quick math there, you don't divide by 30, you divide by 78 or 80 million gallons per day in order to serve a population of Eugene. It still represents a significant amount of time, or growth, for that matter.
Well, sure, yeah. I'm just saying, that's way, way, way down the road. I guess the other thing, and I don't know if we need to discuss it tonight, but we should at some point, is I... Did... Let's see. When we first got our packet last week, it said, the very first thing, it said, "E-Web has filed a lawsuit asking court to declare that E-Web has independent authority to enter into that contract without council approval." Is that a normal... Is that normal procedure to do that? I'm just wondering if, is that how they entered, you know, did the contracts for Rainbow and Bethel and River Road and Santa Clara, is there a council here?
Let's... Well, we might want to defer that question to legal counsel, but let me add a little context around it also, in that, as mentioned earlier, we've had multiple existing wholesale contracts. All of these contracts predate the... No, the Charter Amendment that occurred in 1976. So there was no reason for E-Web to bring this matter to issue, given that our existing contracts happened prior to the Charter Amendment in 1976. Prior to 1976, it was E-Web's understanding, just like it is today, that wholesale water provision was in our purview in terms of our ability, because that's given to all municipal entities within the state of Oregon in Oregon water law. And there are numerous examples of communities having wholesale water arrangements. And so that provides some context. I don't know if there are additional comments want to come in from Brenda or others.
Can I answer your question?
Well, kind of, yeah. I guess we can discuss this next week when we have our... I think it's going to be on the agenda, I think, Monday.
Would you like another round, George?
Maybe, you know, maybe we'll hear some comments tomorrow to help me carry. No, I think I'm okay, maybe.
Okay, Alan, I'm going to jump around.
I'll think real quickly and see.
He hasn't had a shot yet, round one.
George, I think your comment about, you know, the InVision Eugene process and, you know, doing this on a regional basis, I think goes to the heart of the matter to a large degree. You know, it really is, can we cooperate as a region? Or do we want, you know, 10 different entities with 10 different treatment plants sitting out there on the edge of the river? I would argue, no, that we don't, that for the benefit of the citizens of Eugene, we should have one plant, and we should work together as partners with other communities. Does it mean that if we don't sign this contract with Vanita, that Vanita can't grow? No. You know, you can extrapolate that and say, okay, we don't give them the water, therefore eventually we use the water rights, and they play for it themselves, and they get it. They build their own plant right beside ours and ship it themselves to Vanita. I think that's a backward way to approach it. I think we should look at it as good neighbors, good stewards, and work together for a regional benefit. And to give you an example that I look at, every time we do a water project or an electric project, for that matter, I ask staff in pointed terms, what's this going to do to our cost of electricity or our cost of water? And show me how that compares to all of our peers. And when I look, for example, at that chart on how we compare to Portland or Salem or Medford or Roseburg or wherever, I look at one of the places that does the greatest job of regionalization, and that's Medford. And their cost is way below ours, because on a regional basis, they're spreading that cost, a lot of it, you know, frankly, to the agricultural community, in, you know, production in those fields beyond the city limits. But I just think, at the end of the day, if we can act and plan on a regional basis, we're way better off than everybody doing it themselves.
Deborah, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just to tack onto that, I guess fundamentally, the City of Eugene has two primary issues where water are concerned. One are these water rights that we're working hard to perfect, and the other is that we have a single source of water. So when we talk about community, like Ron is mentioning down there, we talk about developing relationships with our community partners around us. Vanita's not in a position to help us with a second source, but clearly, from an overall risk management perspective, we don't know yet what that will look like for Eugene. That's not a decision that's been made. But I do think that we believe that having collaborative relationships will help us down the road when we have that discussion, and that'll be a very important discussion for the whole community.
Thanks. Rich?
Counselor Brown, you made an interesting statement a few minutes ago, you know, about a million people living in Eugene somewhere is down the line. It just made me think, is E-Web's coming up on their 100th anniversary, did the boards that sat 100 years ago and the city councils that sat 100 years ago ever think there'd be 137,000 people in Eugene? I mean, it's not something that we can predict, but through the policies of the boards back then and through the judgments of the city councils and their future predecessors, you know, it's a pretty good city we have here. I don't know, I just think we've got to trust the judgment as we go down that road. And, you know, I looked at that screen that they had up a little while ago, I think we're back to the 40s, if I remember correctly, when you were saying what was approved. Didn't that go back to the 1940s when you had that screen up there earlier?
1927.
1927?
No. Yeah, the first water right on the McKenzie is 1927. Actually, E-Web has a water claim on the Willamette River that's 1887. And, you know, the planning that was done then was way beyond anything that we can comprehend today, and we have a lot of gratitude to the folks that had vision relative to what the future may hold.
I think the whole thing, both the city and E-Web need to realize that everyone's been a good steward of the water supply since its inception. The water's there, the water's going to be there. You know, the real question, is it in the city and the counties will, you know, best interest to sell the water to Vanita? I happen to think it is.
Thank you, Alan.
So there's two different issues going on around here. One is the perfecting of the water rights, and the second issue is the legal issue of the city council approval. And setting aside the perfecting of the water rights one for a minute, Mr. City Attorney, you can help us here. We talked about that last time at our council meeting, and it seemed pretty clear to me that extensions of water service outside the city limits required city council approval. And I guess E-Web's attorney disagreed that that didn't apply to wholesale water contracts? And that's... So how does that issue get resolved on a legal basis?
Last time that we were before you, what we presented to you was, well, here's the background, the legal issue, but here's the policy question. If the council decides it's a policy matter that you think the sale of water to Vanita is a good idea, then my answer to you, and how do we deal with the legal issue, is we punt it. The city council passes a resolution that says, you think the sale of water to Vanita is a good idea, that removes the entire authority question. Because either E-Web has the authority and they entered into the contract, or the council has the authority and you passed a resolution saying E-Web has the authority to enter into the contract, and so there is no question at that point about E-Web's authority to enter into the contract. So if you think the idea, as a policy matter, is a good idea, my advice to you is pass a resolution. If you think the legal issue is more important than the policy issue, that you think is more important to decide, does the council have the authority or does the E-Web board have the authority to approve this, then you direct us to go into court and fight about the legal issue. That would be one way to resolve it. Second way to resolve it is, the charter frankly is unclear, is send out to the voters a charter amendment, decide which way you want it to be clear, and then ask the voters to clarify the charter. From a purely scarce resource issue, my advice is, don't focus on the legalities. Decide as a policy matter whether you think the sale's a good idea. If you decide as a city council that you think the sale's a good idea, we will draft you a resolution that says, regardless of who has the authority, you're approving it. In my mind, I don't know if the court will agree, but in my mind, that removes the legal question. E-Web at that point, in my mind again, clearly have the authority to have entered into the Vanita contract, and the court at that point should declare that contract is valid. But decide as a policy matter, rather than the legal issue, is my recommendation to you.
Before you let go of the mic, one more question. The EIS or Environmental Impact Statement around the potential pipeline, would that ever come before the City of Eugene council?
No. No, the issue that comes before you is the one that you have now. I don't know what, if any land use actions are going to be necessary to construct the pipeline. I don't know if there's a charter, not charter, a metro plan amendment that's involved. I mean, if there's anything like that that's out there, like a metro plan amendment, then that would also come before you. I just don't know where the pipeline's going or what the land use application procedure would be in order to approve that. But no, this would be the one issue that I know would potentially come before you if you decide you want to take it up.
So do we know the route?
Yes. Preferred route is shown on one of the figures that we had up on the screen. It's essentially Highway 126 and then out Cantrell Road to Vanita.
So does any part of that go through the Eugene Wetlands?
I believe not.
There you go.
So, well, Perry Street's east of some of the wetlands.
The pipeline would actually be in Road Eastman.
Would be in Road Eastman, okay. So it wouldn't affect the wetlands, okay. That's good, good. So have we done, or are we going to do a triple bottom line analysis tool on this decision? Mr. City Manager?
We have not done it as far as I know. I don't believe staff has done that yet.
Is that something you're planning on doing? I think that this would be a perfect example of where the triple bottom line tool would come in, would be very useful for council. Well, it's our tool.
I would agree with that. You have to loan the tool, no, I...
Well, I mean, they can help inform it, but it'd probably take longer to explain how to use it than it would be...
It's an opportunity for everybody.
Yeah, because the different carbon footprints of the different options would be interesting to see. So just to clarify where we left off when I started talking, one more question. So this contract's for 40 years, and it has 10-year renewals. How many renewals are there? Is it perpetual? So it's more or less a permanent contract?
It has the capacity to be a permanent contract. I don't believe it requires both parties, does it, at the 10-year, at the close of the 40 years?
Requires both.
Both parties agree?
Both parties agree.
To terminate?
There's termination capability within the contract that's established. You have to give a 10-year notice relative to the termination.
So one party can terminate with 10 years' notice?
10 years' notice, okay. Relatively permanent. So that means that you got this contract, and it has provisions about drought and emergencies for some pullback of the water, but we're not even close to that. So, and we're, if I understood what you're saying, Brad, we're not really close to perfecting all that water right, the whole water right, by any stretch of imagination, or even a quarter of that within the reasonable amount of time. So really, the... If we didn't do the Vanita, we would only perfect our water rights up to what we could say we were going to protect. So it really doesn't add anything to our water right. It just makes the water right bigger. But in the very, 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 very long term, after we're all gone, it potentially could pull back.
Partial certification is the goal relative to helping secure the water right. Vanita is one example of how we can get there in reasonable timeframes, as shown on the chart, out to 2050. We think that if we are able to be in this position and work with other communities, that we'll be able to get to 25% certification by the year 2050. And that's the measure in terms of if it's effective.
Is the certification all or nothing up to 25%? Or can you do 23%?
You can do 23, but that's all you walk away with. If you do 25, you get to come back at another point and try again. And now whether or not you get the whole thing is, you know, I think that's a philosophical discussion, maybe we could have some time. But, you know, the point is, is it gives you another pass at the question of going back to the end of the line.
Brad explained to me, he said, we need a plan, and then we need to show progress towards the plan. So the plan is to work with communities. Vanita represents progress towards that plan.
Okay. Do we know what the amount of the grant is that Vanita's going to get? Is there a number? This is just an application at this point?
At this point, we've not had a... We're waiting until the end of the month to have a determination from rural development, and at that point, they'll deliver a letter of conditions, and they would lay out what the grant is, what the loan is, and what are the kind of conditions that we would have to overcome and which to access to the budget.
And we threw around a cost of $17 million for the pipeline, is that...
Yeah. So one of the deliverables that we needed in submitting the application was this completion of preliminary engineering report. And so the engineers came back with the construction cost, pre-design, the whole thing rolled into about $17 million.
So from here, our plan is to have public hearing, take public comment on this issue, and then vote on a resolution.
There's one other meeting. There's a public forum tomorrow night for staff to present information, educate the public on anyone who would like some additional information, and also provide an opportunity.
Where is that, when?
It's tomorrow night in city council chambers, beginning at 5:30, and we will allow people to make comment, to ask questions, that sort of thing. And then on the 14th will be the public hearing, where you will have an opportunity to hear from the public, and then we'll present you with some options for action.
Yeah, I have two other people in round two, but I'm going to insert myself in the queue here and say, I'm certainly looking forward to hearing public comment at the public hearing and in all other places that we're going to take some input on this. But to this point, I'm favorably disposed to the idea that it's good intelligent long-term planning to perfect this water right. I'm troubled, however, by the authority question, and I'm wondering, Glenn, is there... Is this really simply the three possibilities that you put in front of us? Either we think it's a good idea as well, and we pass it along, and thus the court never makes a real determination here, or we let the court decide, or we put it in front of the citizens as a charter question? Are those really the only three options we have?
I'm sure there are more options. I wasn't planning on actually talking at this meeting at all. So before your meeting on the, I think you're meeting on the 28th, City Manager Brenda and I and others will have thought through, okay, so really, what are the other options? So there may be more that we can present to you at that time after we've had a chance to actually hear your questions, hear this discussion.
We may well end up with a decision that allows all of this to move forward intelligently and smoothly in a way that doesn't cause any kind of legal complications. But I think we may end up punting that question down the road to somebody else in that way, and I think we maybe ought to lend some thought to that maybe before we do. I don't know what the right answer is.
Well, there... Once we know what your desires are, and if your desires were, it would be nice to make sure that the Vanita deal happens, but it would also be nice to get some clarification on the legal question. If that's what you told us, that's your goal, then we could try to come up with an option that would help achieve that goal. So we can think through those kinds of ideas and...
And if any of you between now and 14 have those kinds of things you would like us to think about, send an email to Brenda and let her know. Then we can start trying to come up with options to address that.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to add one thing there if I could.
Sure.
Which is that we've already received one challenge to the petition from three citizens of Eugene and associated groups, and that petition has been filed as part of the validation process. So, you know, we believe that there's already controversy established as it relates to the matter. And, you know, the court will have to address that as the process allows.
Okay. I think that answers my question, which is how do we, how do we not kick a potentially problematic controversy down the road without giving it its due consideration now? I think that's our duty, so.
It's not American, but.
Yeah.
Take it down the road.
All right. Betty?
Thank you. Mine's a legal question for the attorney. If we, and maybe this is irrelevant in light of what we just heard, but if we decide it's a good idea, and we pass the resolution saying we're favored, are we setting a precedent for, in case there are potential future legal disputes?
If the council passes a resolution saying you think the sale to Vanita's a good idea, that does not create any kind of legal precedent that would require the council, if E-Web says, well, now we want to sell water, wholesale water to Junction City or Coburg, you have not established any legal precedent.
Just for this deal.
You would just be approving it for Vanita. My opinion, if the council passes that resolution, I think it actually moves the lawsuit, because the lawsuit right now is over whether the E-Web board has the authority. If the council passes a resolution, it doesn't matter whether E-Web board has the authority, whether E-Web board or the council has it, you both have approved it. So I think it actually moves that lawsuit. So if one of your goals is, you think it's a good idea, the sale, but you want the legal question resolved, then I'd probably tell you, don't pass the resolution, and let the players now in the litigation litigate it.
My question is whether litigation was the only other solution.
Sorry to jump in on you, I apologize.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I have Chris next.
Thanks. Just really fast. Part of the consideration here is, I don't want to hang up Vanita, because I don't think there's, there's a good reason to hang up Vanita. They're, they're trying to get something done, and I don't have a problem, per se, with this arrangement. For me, the issue is what we're talking about right now, which is, okay, how does this thing work with the city and the E-Web board and that relationship? What I'm hearing is, well, you can throw it into court and work it out that way, but then that leaves Vanita hanging. Or we could just go ahead and pass a resolution and have the conversation, but have it later on and not get Vanita all caught up in it. I want to have the conversation, and I, and if we need to deal with it with lawyers, or whether we can deal with it here, or however we can deal with it is fine. But I'm okay with passing the resolution on the assumption that we'll still have the conversation, or we'll still work this out, because I think we need to. But at least we can get Vanita out of the middle of the fray, because I don't think they need to be, you know, caught in, in what's really not their, their discussion at this point.
Did you have?
He just put it on the nail.
Okay, Alan, did you have another round?
So, so the pipeline going down Cantrell Road now that way is outside the UGB, so that ends up actually being a county issue, right?
So, county commissioners would deal with that issue.
We've come to the end of our queue, unless anyone else has something they'd like to add. Deborah?
I would just note that, in the hope that our attorney, Eric, has had better luck with the webcam than George did here on the phone, some of the questions that you're asking, I, I would look and perhaps, just for the record, indicate that Eric and Glenn, I think, have been in conversation, and probably will be again. And, and there are often different interpretations of some of what Glenn has, has stated, but we swore not to speak of it here with him not in the room, so I'm not going to. But I just, I wanted to, I wanted to make you aware of that. And so we'll, we'll make sure that communication happens, so that you get the, the full piece. Because there are different processes for testing, and different vehicles to get there. And, and that's important to note.
Well, and part of what I was trying to do, and I think I said at least five times, my opinions.
Right, I know, I know.
Not only is there that difference of opinions, but like I said, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight.
Right.
Eric has thought a whole lot more about some of this stuff. I haven't had the benefit of having the conversation with him. So before your meeting on the 28, I'll have had that conversation, and so I can give you a more thoughtful answer. And to the extent that Eric and I disagree, we'll certainly present to you, here's what I think, here's what he thinks. Eric, for those of you who don't know, is E-Web's lawyer. Here's what he thinks. And so you'll have the benefit of knowing, now, here's possibly what winds up in court.
Thank you. That's great.
John Brown?
Could I ask staff to maybe explain, I didn't hear this evening, about where this water can be used within the geographic limits of Vanita's existing UGB, and the rule about anybody connecting to this line between Eugene and Vanita? Please.
Good questions. The contract stipulates that the water will be used within the urban growth boundary of Vanita. And the contract clearly states that that's the intended point of use. And Vanita must obtain approval in order to serve anything that would come up that's not within the urban growth boundary. The contract doesn't allow it to happen without asking, nor does it allow other sources to be put in, to mix in with the delivery system without approval and/or consent of E-Web.
And also about the line between Eugene and E-Web, and whether or not anybody can tap into that?
Yeah, the line is constructed by Vanita. It's Vanita's responsibility as it relates to people hooking up to the main. It has no discretion into it relative to E-Web.
Thank you.
Anyone else for this evening? Well, then with that, I'll call the city council meeting adjourned. Joan?
I'll adjourn the E-Web board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.